Thank you. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, November 2nd, 2020. And we will start with a prayer from Jody Engels of Prairie Lakes Healthcare System. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings upon our community. Thank you for life itself, the ability to serve where called, and for the responsibilities you dedicate to those appointed. Please be with the council tonight as they look into tough issues and try to make decisions best for our community. Please be with us through this pandemic and help all of us to make needed adjustments to be safe and care for others. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Should I start over or?
Yes, start over. We didn't hear anything.
Okay. Albertson?
I'm sorry, I just joined, I just joined the meeting and so I'm not sure what the issue is.
Are you present?
Yes.
Okay, Bueller? Absent. Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Rademski? Absent. Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Hollein? And a second by Vilhauer. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. And this is time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment. To step forward and do so, if you're online, please just say, request permission to speak and state your name. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Hearing no one, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And I will be moving item I up to the very top above item A, so we can get that one over and done with. Have a motion by Vilhauer, and a second by Hollein. Any discussion? Oh, I need to add that item. Oh, it's already on there. Never mind. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with item I, which is council approval of Resolution Number 20-56, Adopting the Boundaries of Tax Increment Financing District Number 13 Within the City of Watertown, South Dakota. I have a motion by Hollein.
Second.
And a second by Vilhauer. And I will ask the city attorney, Matt Roby, to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted, this is for you, for your consideration this evening is the Tax Increment Financing District Number 13, which is a project being developed by developer Jesse Craig of Craig Holdings LLC. I believe the entity that will end up owning the project is Generations On First LLC. This is a roughly $10 million project that will be, that will result in the construction of apartment building, I believe is going to be mostly geared towards senior living as well as a senior center located in the building. It's estimated to result in over $2.7 million in incremental value over the course of, over the course of 20 years. And one other note, there is some ongoing discussions about some financing related to this project. And so the developers agreement will not be approved as part of this action. It will come forward at a separate time to be approved separately.
Okay, thank you. And we have the developer here as well as the Watertown Development Company Executive Director here to answer questions unless you wanted to give a presentation.
No, Chris Shilken, Watertown Development Company. Thanks for moving the agenda item up. Matt, thanks for the overview. It's been a while. I think this was approved in April, I believe, at the plan commission. So here for any questions on the plan itself, or, and of course Jesse's here to answer, any questions on the project, which I know the demolition started. So far, the houses are gone. And just here for any questions you guys might have.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's, hi, thank you again for moving this up on the agenda. A little bit of a jaunt home. Yeah, 72plex apartment complex is 55 and older. We have over 20 people on a waiting list already for it. We did do all the demolition, all the site prep, things of that nature. Civil plans are finalized. We're just bidding out the excavation. Precast is already ordered. All the cement's already ordered, all of that stuff. Vilhauer's 12,000 square foot senior center. So we're just finishing up the plans, working with the restaurant equipment manufacturer to help lay out the plans with architect Terry Stroh. So we just got the final plans done on that today. So they're pretty excited. The senior center is about being able to lay out that, that whole floor plan for themselves. So should be a really fun project. I think it'll bring a lot to the community. It's a great location. So excited for it.
All right, thank you. Questions, council? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a few things. First of all, not, not live the TIF, but, and maybe this isn't your area, Jesse, but Meals on Wheels, will that be facilitated out of the new, new area then?
Yeah, ICAP will be, will stay with that. So the lease will be to, again, we'll cancel the lease with the city and the senior center will enter into a new 99-year lease, dollar a year in, or rent for them. And then ICAP will sublease also for a dollar a year for their space.
Okay, thank you. Just a few questions. I've asked some of these same questions that every, every time a TIF has come forward. First of all, always a little bit confused, our, the, the agenda says that we're approving the, the boundaries of the TIF district, but we're actually approving the TIF itself, correct? I guess I'm probably addressing that to you, Matt.
Yes, that's correct. There probably should be a amended motion to include approval of the plan. It's approval of the boundaries, which have already been approved. So at the end of the day, both the plan commission and the council pass on both of those items, the boundaries as well as the plan itself. And so I would suggest maybe a modified motion to include approval of the plan as well as the boundary.
Okay, the, the resolution though, is adopted and the resolution does say plan, right, Matt?
It should, yes.
So we, legally, we've got it, but the description's a little misleading. So...
Yeah, we may just want to, we just want to go back and modify the agenda item. So historically, it looks correct on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea. Hollein, and we modify the motion to include the plan?
I would be happy to.
Okay, and?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for addressing that. And it, again, in this particular case, the city is purely a conduit for those dollars. In other words, there's no city outlay being put up up front for this TIF. I'm seeing nodding from Jesse and Chris. So that, and that's what the document read, reads as well, so.
Right. And like Matt alluded to, there'll be a development agreement at some point with some conversations you've been having. So, yeah.
And again, I've asked this question every time because it is an economic development tip. The, the school district is kept whole throughout the life of the TIF as far as tax revenue?
Correct. And we have that classification already approved from the State Department of Revenue.
Okay. And also, just in looking through the numbers, I see that this brings us up to just under 30% of allowable TIF districts within Watertown. So we have quite a waste to, to go yet as far as utilizing available amounts for, for future TIFs.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Y?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this isn't necessarily a question regarding the TIF, but I do have some questions about this project to Jesse. Would this be an appropriate time to ask those questions?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Jesse, three different questions for you regarding this project. The
first one, with the senior center moving in there, the furnishings, will the senior center be responsible for furnishing their facility? Meals on Wheels, will they be responsible for furnishing the kitchen equipment? And then the senior center, the utilities, will the city pay the utilities? Will the senior center, as they do now, pay their utilities? Or will generations pay the utilities for their property?
So I'll try to remember all those because I'm, so what was the first one? I was trying to listen to all of it and I know I forget all of it.
Sure, sure. The senior center, and yeah, and I can go through them.
Sure.
Furnishings, yes.
Okay, furnishings, they are responsible for, so I'll do all the interior fit up as far as all the walls, the curtains, the serving windows, things of that nature. We'll do all the plumbing, all the electrical, all the lighting, all the windows, all of that stuff. They are going to be able to move their tables and chairs over. And I think they're working with ICAP and as far as working together on whether they're going to do a grant for the remainder of that if they still feel they need it. And then same with the kitchen equipment, ICAP is responsible for that. I offered to help with that, but they would rather do it. They have their system of how they do things for grants and, and things from the state. So they're going to take on that responsibility for their new kitchen equipment. I'm paying the $4,000 to have it all designed and, and priced out and things like that as part of the, the project. But they'll, they'll take care of all the rest of it after that. I told them if they fall short, if they need something from me, just to, to circle back and let me know. Utilities. So it'll be separate meters. So the, the senior center will be responsible for paying their own utilities. And then the ICAP kitchen, senior meals will be responsible for paying their utilities. They're, one of the things that, that's kind of exciting about this is right now, a lot of their money they make off of bingo and, and fundraisers and things like that goes to pay like insurance and, you know, like roof repair and keeping the sidewalk and the parking lot clean of ice and snow and things like that. In this one, you're talking about a brand new structure with much more cost savings in regards to utilities and things like that. I'll take care of all the snow. Of course, there's no lawn. But, you know, they never have to worry about a roof or, you know, replacing windows or anything like that. So a lot of that'll be eliminated. So the money they make off of bingo or dances or things like that, they can actually put, you know, to capital expenditures or things they want to actually improve on. Like if they want to buy another pool table because they've got two now and there's room for three in the new space, you know, things of that nature. If they can get it donated, you know, things like that. And then there's a third question.
I think that was all the questions, Jesse, but I did have one more question while I've got you. The apartments, are they income based or are they a set pri, senior housing rent?
It'll be a, a regular housing. It'll be real similar, but a little less than the lofts. But there are not fixed income or, or income based. They're not, there's a market rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, let's look for action on the amended motion first. We have to vote on that, I think. So all those in favor of amending the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the motion has been amended and now we'll vote on the amended motion itself. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the second reading of ordinance number 20-37, A Zoning Text Amendment to Chapter 21.73, Landscape and Lighting Standards of the Revised, Revised Ordinances of the City of Watertown.
So moved.
Motion by Hoyer, and a second by Hollein. And I will ask the Public Works Director, City Engineer Heath Bonnai to introduce it.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As introduced at the first reading, this is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 21 of the City Code, which is the zoning ordinance. This particular section relates to landscaping and lighting requirements for any development within our community. And sharing my screen with you here. And we'll walk through some of the details. It's really a pretty simple addition to this section of the ordinance that creates a requirement or clarifies. Pardon me as I get this zoomed in here. It clarifies the requirements for the disturbed areas, the lawn areas, for residents to be seated back with a residential grass mix. And we would incorporate that requirement to be checked off at the time of final building inspection before the certificate of occupancy is issued. And if somebody's building a home and their certificate of occupancy is desired in, say, the month of December or January, and it's obviously not applicable or feasible to plant grass seed in that time of year, we also have language in here that accounts for that, to offer up to an eight-month extension if seasonal limitations are encountered. At the last meeting, I will touch on this. A question that came up is whether this language in this chapter of ordinance would be retroactive, retroactively enforceable. After further review with staff and with the city attorney, Matt Roby, throughout the last couple of weeks, what we were proposing to do is keep this language as is in this section of ordinance that addresses the requirements for here moving forward on new construction and having it inspected at the time of the COs being issued. But then also take a step further in looking at, I believe it was Chapter 11 that we would look at amending, as far as a nuisance and maintenance type of ordinance update that could be then retroactively applied anywhere throughout the community under a nuisance type of ordinances in Chapter 11. I don't know, Matt, if you want to expand on that detail any at all, or if Brandy would like to chime in. Our urban planner, Brandy Hanton, helped draft this ordinance amendment as is. And all of us are available for questions.
Thank you. And I think before we do that, I will open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here that would like to testify about this. If you're online and you'd like to speak on this topic, please just say, request permission to speak and state your name. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments about this? Doesn't look like it. So we'll take some action then. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is approval of Resolution Number 20-49, Amending the Curbside Collection and Tipping Fee Rate Schedules for Solid Waste Services Related to the Watertown Regional Landfill Operations and Setting an Effective Date of February 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Hoyer?
Okay.
And a second by Vilhauer. Lot of pressure on you guys, since only three of you here. And I'll ask Keith to tell us about this, please.
Absolutely. Thank you again, Mayor. This, this topic was discussed, it's been a handful of meetings ago now, where our consultant, AE2S, presented their recommendations and findings that have previously been discussed with this utility rate committee that we also had established within the city, which included a couple, few city council members and several staff members. And the, the study that AE2S performed, of course, related to both solid waste slash landfill operations, but also the wastewater operations. I'll note that this resolution that we're on right now, 20-49, is specific to the solid waste services, the curbside collection of garbage, garbage and refuse in the city, along with the services performed out at the landfill, the tipping fees associated with materials accepted at the landfill. And we do have AE2S on the line with us tonight. Ryan Graff with AE2S is, is here to discuss this. And I'll hand it over to him. He's going to give the council a brief update, kind of along the same lines of the information that was shared here several weeks back, just as a brief refresher. And then we could definitely help answer any questions and talk through any of the scenarios and comparatives as far as what these proposed rates look like in comparison to what they're at right now today.
Okay, thank you.
You available, Ryan?
Thank you, Heath. I'm gonna share my screen here real quick. As Heath said, we have worked extensively with the, the city to get to this point. And we really do appreciate the opportunity to work with you to help set your financial plan for your utilities and incorporate that into the new rates for, for your community. Just as a brief refresher, the study was, took about, oh, I think it started in about March and we really wrapped up kind of the end of, or April, and wrapped up the end of August, as Kevin Smith was previously here to present to the working session. There was really good engagement with city staff. Really appreciate a lot of the feedback that we got along the way. And it really helped to make sure that we had a high quality outcome for you as a community. Also appreciate the kind of subcommittee that was formed to help guide us along the process because while a lot of rates and what we do here is really form the technical basis for the recommendations we made, there are, there were some policy questions that, and just kind of some general approaches for your community that were good to get that input on throughout the process itself. Knowing that, you may or may not remember all of it, just because you don't deal with it every day like we do, really the core of what we did, and this is, is called a cost of service analysis. And this is just a kind of example of what that cost of service analysis actually does. But really throughout this process, when we were setting rates, we looked at, all right, what is your community doing today? How, as far as the cost associated with providing service, how do those costs translate to the day-to-day operations of providing service? And then finally, how do the users who are receiving that service really cha, drive what needs to happen on a day-to-day basis? And that was the foundation of the, the technical side of how we did provide rate recommendations. On top of that, we did look long-term for your utilities, looking out over the next 10 years on what it really meant for what they, they needed to accomplish and what was on the horizon as far as capital and other expenses, to make sure that as a community, the, the rate plan would be enough, that we recommended would be enough to meet those challenges. What we did end up with here is, and I have combined solid waste and wastewater for ease of presentation, but it's looking at on the solid waste side, you see on the bottom there, residential collections increasing by a dollar a month recommendation and in 2021, and then another dollar a month in 2022. And so as a standard fee would be about 1,250. From there, it was also determined that the municipal solid waste tipping fee, and you are, just to be clear, sorry, you are not, as far as I am understanding, acting on the 2022. But we did look kind of in a two-year rate block on the, the solid waste. On the municipal solid waste, the tipping fee side, increases of about four, $4.50 a ton were recommended for the standard tipping fee and then as well for the surcharge. And then $2.50 a ton for inert waste, yard waste, and white good. On the wastewater side, approximately $3.10 a month on, for the residential and commercial fixed charge. And for residential, there is no volume metric charge. And, and that's per thousand gallons. And then for the commercial side after, or sorry, per CCF, which is 100 cubic feet. And then after commercial users exceed three CCF, they would see a $2.89 per CCF charge. Industrial side with your kind of larger, higher strength users, looking at a seven dot, $78.30, which includes a charge of seven CCF in that. And then for those CCS above the seven, $5.32, just due to the, the type of discharges that we see from them and the, the higher cost to treat that. And so with that, if there are any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Council, do we have any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
Ryan, or Heath, maybe you addressed this and I'm not under, didn't catch it. What is Subtitle D tipping fee? What does Subtitle D refer to?
Yeah, Ryan, Mike's on the phone too, but essentially what that is, is a specific kind of solid waste in relation to the license that we hold from the state and, and how it's regulated. And Mike would have a lot more in-depth knowledge on what Subtitle D waste includes. But generally, it's a certain category of waste and it covers quite a breadth of, of material that we accept at the landfill.
Okay, that's fine. And I guess a question for, for Heath or Mike. When was the last time we adjusted these rates?
Mike, do you have that?
This is Mike here. The solid waste fees were last adjusted April 1st, 2015.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Any other question? Councilman Hollein?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for, I guess, Heath. I just want to make clear, I went
I just want to make clear, I went back and watched the presentation from August 17th. Good presentation, very informative. I recommend it for the public. I want to make certain that we are only voting upon the increase today, like, let's say, the residential collection month of of a dollar. Because in the proposal, it says then another dollar the next year, and another dollar the following year, and I think that goes on for five years in the actual presentation on the graph. And then it suggested lower increases every year subsequent to that. And I just want to make absolutely certain that we are only voting on this particular year, and next year, if we want to increase it another dollar, that that is another different discussion.
Yes, absolutely. The resolution before the council tonight is in relation specifically to 2021's rates. So you are correct that it is only accounting for the dollar increase for 2021, and then the other subsequent tipping fee increases for 2021. And then in order to follow the plan, of course, staff would bring forth the same recommendation in subsequent years to the councils that are present at that time.
Which I think is good, because that way, based upon how the economy changes, city finances change, we can have a separate conversation at that time. But at at this time, I don't see any problem with this increase. It has been a long time coming. I just, Heath, perhaps you could explain to the public that some of this money is going to the reserves so that the so that we are prepared to deal with things as they come along in the future? It's just being prepared?
Yes, thank you for that, Councilman Hollein. The, one of the points of discussion that we had, that the consultants brought up, and Ryan, you can maybe expand on this a little bit more too, but it was it was obvious to them and apparent to them that the need for having more cash on hand, more reserves built up for different types of projects and needs at, whether it be the the landfill or on the wastewater side at the wastewater treatment facility. And in discussions with our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, of course, we were all in agreement that that made sense to incorporate a plan that helped build those coffers and make them a little stronger for future planning and and meeting those needs at those facilities. And I don't know if Kristen or Ryan, if anybody else wants to chime in on that with any other logic there than what I generally covered.
Though, one thing I would add, and for council and the public, you know, there's always the hard balance of trying, of how much do you reserve to be prudent, to make sure that you do have future costs covered, or emergencies covered, unexpected breaks, things like that. Balancing that with the fact that that benefits future users. And so what we really did do is we aren't recommending large increases to the overall reserves, but kind of easing into it based on the long-term rate schedule adjustments that you you did see at the previous meeting, and trying to find that that balance to best serve your your user base.
All right, thank you. Councilman Albertson's had his hand up for a while. Go ahead, Councilman Albertson.
Thank you, Mayor. This question's for Ryan. How did we compare with other places, or how did you come up with these plans to go up a dollar on residential, you know? I'm just wondering, how does Watertown compare with maybe cities around us, or how did you come up with this? Well, there you go. Thank you.
We're down at the bottom.
Just to be, to be clear, we do set rates based on the technical need of your community, okay? Where, looking out across the items that you do need to fund, whether it's new compactors at the bailing facility, or new trucks, things like that, right? The the day-to-day things that need to be funded to make sure that your your system and your solid waste collections, for example, are operating at the level they need to operate to make sure your residents don't see so that the downside to service are rare, if ever they happen. That being said, we do understand that it doesn't happen in a vacuum, right? And you are still very competitive as far as solid waste residential rates go throughout South Dakota.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lalum?
Thank you, Mayor. Heath, what is our current fee for the sump pump?
On the sump pump, those specifics, Councilman Lalum, we will talk about those a little bit more in depth in in the wastewater resolution, which is two items down the list here. But to your question, there's currently not a sump pump fee for connection or use of the system that we allow for in ordinance right now. Now, Mike, could you chime in? Are we collecting a permit application fee at the current time?
No, there is no cost, no, no application fee, or no variance fee at this time. There has not been in the past.
I'll hold my question for two more then.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vilhauer, did you have a question?
Same question that Dan asked, so I'm good.
Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Councilman Hollein?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something. There was a little bit of miscommunication going around social media today in Watertown. We are not talking about stormwater
Utility.
Fees, utilities, or anything like that. That was perhaps a mistake done there. This is a specific issue, and then as far as like the sump pumps go, that is going to be a separate issue, so just, it's easy to get them all mixed up, but we are taking them one at a time.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Ryan, hang tight. We got a, we slipped a a different item in here between yours, so. The next item is approval of resolution number 20-52 for the refunding of the wastewater revenue bonds, State Revolving Fund Loan Number Nine, Wastewater Department. A motion by Hollein, and a second by Hoyer, and I'll ask Kristen to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like this is the season of refunding. I'm bringing one more forward. This would actually be to refund our SRF loan number nine, which was the Headworks project for the wastewater. There's currently about $6.8 million worth of debt left. It is set to come due in 2031, so what we would be doing is we would be refinancing the loan, basically paying that off, and then issuing our own bonds for that. I have received authorization from the state DNR to proceed. Essentially, what this resolution does is it gives the mayor and I authority. If everything looks good, and the amount that we would save is still feasible after the resolution makes its 20 days, to basically proceed with it. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Yes, how much money do you expect that we'll save, Kristen?
This one is projected, if the numbers hold, it's always, especially with the election and stuff happening right now, but our last projection was we were right around that $300-plus thousand, so.
That's nice. Councilman Roby? Oh, oops, did he have his hand up?
You asked my question for me, thank you.
Oh, okay. Councilman Lalum?
Thank you, Mayor. Kristen, on this one, we're not extending that date on that at all, correct?
No, no extension of the date. It would just be a refunding and then getting the lower interest rate.
And then that $300,000 is over the remaining, correct?
Yes, over the remainder of the of the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item D is approval of resolution number 20-48, amending the rate schedule for the wastewater utility services for the city of Watertown, and setting an effective date of January 1st, 2021.
So moved.
A motion by Vilhauer.
Second.
And a second by Hoyer, and I'll ask Keith to introduce this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, of course, the wastewater utility rate version of what we just discussed in comparison to the solid waste and landfill rates. So wastewater rates effectively are implemented towards residential users, commercial users, and what we have known as significant industrial users. And then also incorporated in our rate proposals that we'll touch on is a newly proposed sump pump variance fee that is in relation to the amount of sump flows that get treated at the wastewater treatment facility. So with that, I will again hand it over to Ryan Graff and see if he had anything to touch on briefly for the wastewater rate recommendations due to AE2S's research that they've done on our behalf.
Thank you, Heath. I'm happy to answer any questions. A lot of the same background applies on how we really approach the rates, looking really at the core of the technical need of the community with this study. I have similarly the same type of regional graphs and and for rates and things like that, so with that, I stand for questions. And I I hope, I do have the the summary rate table in front of us.
Ryan, could you pull up the comparative table again? That's always a good one to look at, for the residential rate at least, as far as other South Dakota communities?
Yeah, so again, you are still very competitive on utility bills, even with the proposed rate change, where your residential rate will still be at, I guess, the the top of the the chart, which is actually the lowest, and need for your community to be able to tackle that. A lot of that is due to the the good management where Mike and his team have really been able to do quite a bit over the years to keep you running as efficiently as possible.
All right, kudos, Mike. Councilman Albertson?
Maybe this is for Ryan. I'm not exactly sure, but I think that it was mentioned earlier about the new sump pump variance fee, going from zero to $127, $125. Does that seem exorbitant, or is it just me that thinks it is because of not having one and then going to $125?
Yeah, I I'll take a first stab at that. So as part of that, and I don't have the regional comparison for that up, there aren't as many communities that allow sump pump discharges into their system because of the additional costs that that does bring to the treatment plant, and the the capacity it takes away from your industrial users, your homeowners, as you're looking to make sure that you are effectively treating the sewage for your your community. Throughout the region, really, I believe you were the only one that didn't charge a fee for that. And, sorry, Grand Forks just instituted it last fall, and because it was a brand-new fee, they didn't institute a new ordinance, they didn't associate a fee with it. But between the other communities, the fees ranged anywhere from 50 up to above 200, I believe. And so really, that was one of the conversations we did have around that, the sump pump discharge on on how to to show the value of that, because one of the things that we did look at is if all of the infiltration and inflow throughout your community, which includes kind of the general seepage into your system, but then also those discharges, they were charged at the the regular rate. They, over the years, would fluctuate from in a few, $100,000 or so, upwards of over a million dollars, depending on the total amount that would be in in any given year.
All right, thank you. And and that is not a monthly fee. That covers, what, five months? So it's $20 a month for five months, I think, is, plus a $25 application fee.
From October 15th to March 15th.
Yes, Councilman Hollein?
Well, I don't want to, I know that there's some colleagues online that want to speak. I want to just address the sump pump issue. And in lieu of what Councilman Albertson said, jumping from zero to 125, I also thought that was a little high. I am going to make a proposal to institute that fee at $50.
Okay, I've got numerous hands up. Is that a motion, or?
I'd say just a discussion topic for right now. I don't want to, I don't want to intrude by debating a motion.
Yeah, okay.
But I just, I would, I I will say that I will be making that motion.
Okay, Councilman Roby?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, just for full disclosure, I am one of the people that has, for a number of years, got gotten the variance to pump sump water in the sewer during those months. I'm okay with us charging a fee. In fact, I think we should charge a fee for this. The only public comment I've gotten was, it seemed a little steep. I did get that from some people. But I guess I would throw out a question to those that were involved when this got discussed. How did we come up to 125? It might be the exact right number. You know, again, I think we should be charging for this, and I am more than willing to pay for it. Can somebody just put in some color on how the number was arrived?
Okay, do you want to let, are you going to answer that?
I I would. I I would like to address what Don's question.
Okay, Councilman Vilhauer?
Don, thank you for the question. I was one of them, and Beth, you can chime in anytime. You you and I represent the council on this committee. We struggled with this. We knew it was going to be a bone of contention, no matter what we did, starting from zero to whatever we would propose. Mike, if I'm not mistaken, I think you threw out a figure, you figured cost of city about $300,000 a year to treat this water in a typical year. Am I in the ballpark on that, Mike?
Yes, that's my recollection. That is pretty close to the number that we were, that was estimated.
So so the feeling was, we wanted to attempt to recapture some of that. We we, and we wanted to make the fee, and we had proposed, there was a proposal for a much higher fee, actually, to be proposed. I think we felt that would never, that would go over like lead balloon with the rest of us on the council, as well as the public. But we also wanted to make it something that would be a little bit painful. I will just use that word. Because as an attempt to, for some of those that probably did not necessarily need to get the variance, for them to reconsider getting that on an annual basis, that would then lessen our need to treat that water. So that, so as far as anything magical about where that 125 came from, it was kind of a, probably kind of a compromise from going from zero up to, I think we had proposed at one point, we had a proposal of 250 a season on the table. So really, that'd be kind of a compromise between the two. Now, I think the fear was, is that if we do charge this fee, we might potentially be driving people underground, if you want to use that terminology. That will then, you know, still use the, you know, that won't get the variance, but still discharge their water into the system. So there is that risk as well, if we get too steep with the fee. So I guess it really boils down to, we as a committee felt like was a happy medium between where we are now with zero versus what had been, some other option had been kicked around, and as well as looking what other communities had been charging for the same service.
Thank you, Glenn. Councilman Manti, did you want to weigh in on that as well? You were on the committee.
Yeah, I did. Glenn recapped a lot of the the high points on this, and we did have a discussion, just so people know, about the downside of people just going ahead and putting their sump water back out into the street, and then creating a nuisance. And so that was taken into account as well. And one of the things that was part of that discussion was that we wanted to encourage people to do what was right on their we wanted to encourage people to do what was right on their landscaping, if possible, to make sure that we were constructing basements or properties with, you know, so that they weren't below the groundwater level, some of those kind of things. So this is also to encourage good habits, if you want to call it that, or good practices by not only the community and the citizens, but the protecting, it is extremely expensive and a big drain on our system to process all that clean water in the wastewater treatment. And so I think people need to understand that the influx of water that we have is breaking down our system faster. And and remember that this is a entire season. This includes the application fee and the monthly fee. So when you break it down like that, it's not very expensive. Way that with the idea that continually bringing this flow into our wastewater treatment system is prematurely aging the system. So.
Excellent recap, Councilwoman. And I I think it's important to point out that when you do have a sump pump that runs steadily, the amount of clean water that you discharge to the sanitary sewer system is astronomically larger than the amount of waste you actually discharge to the sewer system. So we're cleaning lots and lots of clean water, but once it mixes in with the sewage, obviously, it's all dirty. And it all gets pumped numerous times if you are in a part of town that has lift stations, like at the lake. You know, that the cost is not being completely covered by this, but it does offset it. Councilman Lalum.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, what does that twenty five dollar fee go towards? Is it, you know, inspection or what is it, was it going to?
That, yes, filling out the application, processing the application, and our wastewater crews do spend quite a bit of time managing this. It's it's labor intensive. If you have specific questions, I'm sure Mike will tell you all about that.
I'm just wondering, is that included in inspection of, you know, of the system?
I I think that's the idea. Mike, did you want to answer that?
Well, I would say that, yes, it's in some cases. If we've already inspected the property and we know the configuration of their sump pumping piping system, we don't necessarily have to go out. But a lot of these people have called in, they have never been inspected, so that many of them, then we do go and do an inspection before we will issue it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Roby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple additional points. When we had the high water going on a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken, we put out a plea to people to stop putting, make sure you're not putting sump water down the system because it had the potential of overwhelming our system. Is that an accurate recollection?
That's very accurate.
Okay, second point is, it does cost a lot of money. The number three hundred thousand dollars has been thrown around a few times, and I recall that number from past discussions. I I kind of look at this, and again, I I'm going to be one of the people that are paying this, but if it it's good, we stress our system by pumping this down, which shortens the lives of our equipment, we use our pumps more, et cetera. And then when we have to upgrade that stuff, everybody in the city gets to pay for it. I think when you got kind of a unique situation like this, where we have the option to put that in the sewer system, I I would be cautious to put that too low, because I think there's another cost down the road when we have to wear out, we have worn out equipment and have to upgrade some of the things in the future. So I I would be cautious of setting it too low. I think we we shouldn't do that.
There are long term impacts as well for future development that's limited by the capacity that's used up by clean groundwater being in our sewer system. Councilman Hoyer.
I think we're kind of touching on it, but I'd like to get to Mike on it a little bit, but just thinking about that down the line part, because right now, what do we hit, Mike, for capacity? Like, when we had that really wet year, what was the worst we got on our capacity? Do you know percentage wise how full we were?
Well, I guess the best I can do to answer that question would be, last year, where we had severe sump pump issues, the worst we've had in twenty five years, as far as the flow generated by these clear waters. When we looked at one one subdivision in particular, we put a flow meter in there. We had estimated that that, based upon the number of housings and an estimated number of people per house, that there there should have been somewhere around a hundred, hundred and twenty five thousand gallons a day coming out of that neighborhood. And there were four hundred and seventy five thousand gallons a day coming out of that neighborhood. And then as we remove those sump pumps, we we drop that, we drop that flow down, I think, three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand. To two hundred, to two hundred thousand it was. Yeah, okay. Thanks, Greg.
Mike, I I would add to that, because I I do have some of the numbers in front of me, but looking at your unbilled flows that came to your plant, usually about ten percent of them comes from your just kind of general collection system, and that's very good as far as industry standard goes. In twenty nineteen, approximately forty five percent or so of all of the flows that came to the plant were from kind of the unbilled flows, which means you had about thirty five percent of that, of the total flows coming kind of from the discharges into the system from sumps.
Thank you.
So I guess my point with that is that, as a community, I don't foresee us getting smaller. I think we're going to just continue to grow. So we need to be looking at some good practices down the line with this. I think this is part of that, just making sure that we don't overwhelm that system, because we are going to need to expand at some point. But we can get a lot more mileage out of our overall system, I would feel, if we can manage this a little better right now. You know, nobody likes to take on more, but it's just, it it's part of what it is with our water table, how it currently plays, so. Yeah, I think it's just if we want to see more mileage out of our system, we need to be responsible with it in this way. And then looking ahead, I hope that we have measures in place for enforceability of this, because I know before we could look at flows and everything, but, I mean, essentially, we sent out a letter just saying, please, don't do this.
Yeah, there'll be fines. And I don't know if that's included in this resolution. Is it? Fines for discharging without a permit?
You know, off the cuff, I do not believe we incorporated fines in here, but I'd let Marcy or Ryan chime in on the final draft of the resolution, just to confirm that. While they're double checking it for me, if I could chime in on Councilman Hoyer's comment. I I too think that's a big part of the discussion, is looking ahead and what we can be doing as a community to help reduce and eliminate these flows for new building, that new development that we see from here forward. And we do have several measures that we started, not started to implement, but we've had in place that we're maybe more cognizant of as of lately. One of them being, you know, making sure that the lowest finished floor elevation is at least two feet above the groundwater elevation. That goes a long way in the right direction of eliminating or reducing these these sump pump flows into our system. And then you know, the other discussion talking points we've been having are the implementation of sump collection systems, where it does give homeowners location to to pump these two. And of course, there are seasonal limitations to those two, depending on how they're installed and where they outfall to, but essentially, it ends up being like a mini storm sewer system for sump flows. And we do have a couple in the community, to my understanding, have worked well even through the the cold winter months that we incur. But those types of measures are definitely things that we as an engineering and community development are are wanting to continue to look into and research and bring proposals to the council for solutions.
All right, thank you.
I did just check, Heath, and there is no language on the fine within the resolution. And if I remember the discussion correctly, from a few months back, it had to do with how the fine is actually levied through the judicial process. And it where I think it's it's up to the judge himself, him or herself, to to make the final fine. But I could stand corrected on that.
This is Marcy. Ryan, you are correct. I did have a conversation with Matt at the time we were going through the process with the committee. And it is through the judicial process, but it also has somewhat to do with our ordinances. And so there may be a change coming up with our ordinances in relation to the sump pump charge in the future. We just needed some more time to research it, along with talking with Matt. I needed to do some more detailed items.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Albertson.
Thanks, Mayor. I kind of agree with Councilman Holley on this. It's it's not that I don't think we should have a fee on there, but I think the charging going from zero to a hundred twenty five, maybe Ryan had it right on earlier when he said we'd start with a dollar increase and go to one the next year and one the next, maybe in this case, you go with fifty dollars for the first year and sixty or seventy. I understand we need the money and potentially need the money, but I don't know if going from zero to a hundred and twenty five is what I would recommend. Thank you.
Right. Councilman Lalum.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I don't I don't know who can answer, probably you. How many people do we give a variance to currently?
Last year, Adam, we issued five hundred and fifteen variances. And this year, today, as of today, this morning, we were at two fifty four, but they were still incoming as the day goes up. And if you take a look at last year, the five hundred and fifteen variances issued, and if you applied that fee to them, it generated about, it would have generated about sixty four thousand, sixty four thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, which is about one fifth of the cost of treating that water last year, I'd say, approximately, just ballparking.
Yeah, and the question I have, especially right now, and I did have constituent reach out to me, just, you know, they're on, they're literally on disability and they're, you know, another hundred dollars is, frankly, it's a lot for them, but, you know, that that's a concern I have as well. You know, it's it's not going to be enough to cover our costs by any stretch of the imagination. I do understand it. It's just, you know, it's a hard one, so.
Okay, thank you. Council, Councilwoman Manti.
Yeah, I also, people know me from my discussions, that I'm also very careful about what we put onto our community members in terms of financial obligations or burdens, but I really believe that in light of all the things we just talked about in regards to the system and and how long this has been going on. And and perhaps we can, as an aside, we can work with community members who have those hardships like Adam was talking about. But if we don't start now, we're not going to get the impact that we want in terms of changing practices, changing habits, starting to offset some of the costs we have directly, and also long term, when we have to replace and repair equipment, which then goes on to the entire community, not just the users of it, and and then strike that balance with not having people discharge into the street. So so there's a lot of wheels turning on this, and, you know, with actual cost comments, that's where we ended up with those really high figures that we had, that Ryan was talking about in the two hundreds. This was sort of a back down for the very reasons everybody's talking about in terms of impact financially and those types of things. But if you look at other communities who even allow this practice, some don't even allow it, we, they all charge a fee. So it's just something that maybe we have to work with the individuals here and there that may need some assistance, but put the cost directly to the users of it and then offset just a little bit. Mind you, this is not going to do anything to have a huge offset for the individuals who actually use it. And to Heath's point about talking about the sump pump collection points and things like that, perhaps we look at this as another way to contribute to that fund to be able to put those into neighborhoods that really need them, that are existing and don't have the opportunity to redo their road or their landscaping, things like that. But without some way to start this off, those things just won't happen. And so I think, you know, Don made the point too, that we don't want to start too low, and I understand the the attractiveness of, you know, putting it into an incremental type of thing, but I guess I would caution away from that in the sense that they've been doing it for free for a long time, and and I just see it as a way to start to offset what would be a burden to all the taxpayers if we have failure in our system. So that's my soapbox.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Roby.
I just wanted to add that forty five percent of the system that's that's being treated in our system in two thousand nineteen was from not from sewer flows. That's a shocking number to me. That means our equipment is going to wear out a a lot faster, and we're going to have, there's more repairs, we have to replace the equipment fact faster. If I, I want to verify something else. I thought our presenter said that that's normally a ten percent number in a city. Was that, did I hear that correctly?
So when we looked at your data, it was, it averaged, or it was between a fifteen percent in kind of dry years or average wet years, and it up to the forty five or so in the two thousand nineteen. About ten percent of so of the fifteen, right? So ten percent of the flows or so are about what we attribute to kind of your general collection system as opposed to discharges into it. And that is a very good number from kind of industry standard approaches.
So, thank you for that answer. Then what I'm reading, that forty five percent number, two thousand nineteen, forty five percent of the water we treated did not get any kind, did not drive any revenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Hoyer.
I guess for me on this issue, I've heard this rhetoric before on the council, and I guess I would lean on it here. We tasked many individuals to take part in this committee. They did a lot of heavy lifting and a lot of thinking on it. So for me personally, I'm going to trust their judgment on this, that they discussed this at length. They've already mentioned, they backed it down from a number that was originally thrown out, which would have been pretty rough, looking at it. And this is already backing it down. So I'm just going to trust, and I I feel it's necessary, but I'm going to still trust their judgment on this, that they took the time and definitely dove a lot deeper than we did even here, but I think it's appropriate as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Villar.
I want to thank you for the comment, Michael, being one of those on the committee. I've already said my piece. Beth, you very eloquently summarized it again just recently, but I do want to clarify one thing. This does, this would not go into effect until October of twenty twenty one. So it's not as though all of a sudden we're going to be foisting this additional fee on residents immediately. There is a year before it would go into effect.
Thank you for pointing that out. Good point. Councilman Holley.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions, and then I'll make my motion, and so that we can move on, because there's other parts to this proposal that are good, that aren't getting the discussion, but we can put the sump pumps part of, sump pump part of it behind us. Mike, do you have, you listed off five hundred and fifteen homeowners who applied for the permit. Do you have any idea how many people are doing it currently without a permit?
No, we do not.
Okay. And then the question of enforcement has come up. How is this enforced currently? How do you, how does anyone envision this coming being enforced? I mean, I understand the fines, but in order to get to a fine, first, you have to find someone doing it, and as far as I know, that means going into someone's house.
No.
Well, then how would you do it?
You, the cameras can locate the the flow that's constant coming out as opposed to a normal wastewater flow. Like, and Mike, you can explain how you've done this in the past, but they've they've done this skillfully in years where it was a desperate need. Mike, can you explain how you do that?
Yeah. Yeah, how we identify these is when these, you see the flows come in, you know, the water, you know where the water's coming in. And then we go down those those sewers with the camera system, and we see a house pumping clear water, we'll sit there and stop. You'll see a sump pump, you know, it kicks in, it pumps down the little sump, and then it stops pumping while the, while while sump fills again, then it goes through a cycle. It's pretty easy to identify them. And so what we do with the first time offenders, that the first time that we've observed this at a residence, we send them a certified letter that does not have a fine involved in it. And we let them know that that is in violation of the ordinance, and that it's not permitted, and that they need to get out of the sewer. No, no penalty is is applied by the courts until they, it's a second offense. And in a second offense, then they appear in court, and then it's that time that the the legal system assesses a penalty. And then it's that time that the legal system assesses a penalty.
Thank you, Mike. Actually, excellent job. I want to commend you. I mean, I think that you and your team have been doing fantastic work across the board. There's been good work on this proposal. So I like that aspect of it, that you can do it without undue intrusion into people's lives or houses. So, good job on that. With that said, just to put the sump pump issue behind us, I don't think that there's any council member against the idea of the, of the expense or the variance, but it is just a matter to the degree. So with that said, I will make a motion to change the one hundred and twenty-five dollar fee down to a fifty dollar fee. And part of my argument, I guess I could just, just make that motion and wait to see if it gets a second.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mayor, Dan Albertson. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Hollein and a second by Albertson. You want to describe further?
Thank you, Mayor. I just think that the jump, while it has been explained, I understand that, it's still a shock to the homeowners. These homeowners who have the non-stop sump pump going throughout the year, I have enough sympathy for them as it is. I mean, they've got issues that they're dealing with in their own basements. And I don't want to make any of our citizens criminals by having a fee that makes them balk until we come back and enforce it. I think at fifty bucks, I think most people of the city are going to say, okay, this is, this is what we can do to kind of pay our share. I would also say that at a hundred and twenty-five dollars, we're losing, we're not paying for the expense anyway. So if we're going to be losing money anyway, I say make it to the point where it's more palatable to the homeowners.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on that? All right, Councilman Hoyer?
So the rhetoric, just forgive me. The rhetoric there is that even though it doesn't cover it all, we just shouldn't do it, or we should just decrease what we charge for it, even though we could cover more of it with an appropriate number. I just, I want to make sure I understand.
Would you, I mean, I guess the reverse would be, would you be in favor of making the variance at whatever, seven hundred dollars? In order to cover the expense?
No, because I don't think that's palatable at all. I just, I'm sorry, the committee did a lot of work on this and they backed it down already. I feel like doubling down on that seems a little excessive.
I understand. And that can be, that can be your justification for how you vote. And I would respect that. I'm just going to go down a course that I believe.
Okay, Councilman Roby?
Thank you, Mayor. The quick math says if we did five hundred and fifteen of these last year's times fifty, it only raises twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars on a problem which gets some years into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Respectfully, I'm probably going to vote no on the proposed motion.
Councilman Lalum?
Thank you. And to either motion, I'm, I'm okay with us having a fee to it. The question I have is if somebody is financially strapped and is on a fixed budget, is there, is there some sort of recourse that we can do to assist them? That would be my question. So someone on disability that currently has, is there a way that we can, as a community, assist them in helping them get through that?
Yeah, I guess I'm not aware of anything. I mean, there's probably resources available for utilities that are too high for people to afford. And this would apply to that. Councilman Hoyer?
Well, I would agree with Councilman Lalum on this. I mean, for those, that it really is a huge burden. If we look into it, can we just see if there is something out there? And if there's not, maybe we come back to the table and start seeing if there is anything that can be created or looked into, I guess. Because I, I agree. I mean, that's, for someone who's really barely making it, it's tough. And there's already utility aid out there for others in other ways. So I'm just curious if there is something on the books that is there already or if there's something we maybe look into.
I'm not aware of anything specific. Councilman Y?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it a possibility that this hundred and twenty-five dollars could be spread out over twelve months for those financially strapped versus spreading it out over the six months, the October through March?
Yeah, I don't know why not. I guess we could have an option that's more labor-intensive. Not sure, I guess I shouldn't speak. Kristin, can you comment on that?
I guess the thing is to probably have to work with municipal utilities just to establish how this fee will be collected. I don't know if its plan is to be collected through the actual billing or if we as a city were going to build these directly. It's kind of a conversation to have.
Yeah, it's not set up as a monthly. It's set up as a one-time fee. Yeah, it wouldn't really lend itself to the utility bill, which is more monthly.
But my concern with Josh's proposal is you've got overlapping years. There's going to end up becoming kind of a bookkeeping hassle, keeping track of exactly which year are you, which, which year is that monthly payment? Or which season is that monthly payment being applied to? And then if you got, then you got the issue of somebody were to happen to, to move or leave or discontinue or to go to different residents, and they're still on unpaid balance from a previous season. I, I just see the monthly, I appreciate the thought and the concern, but I just see some issues, bookkeeping issues with spreading this out over a period of time versus collecting the fee like we're envisioning.
Yeah, agree. Councilman Manti?
I think Glenn addressed it a little bit, but just to reinforce the idea that this is a fee that's paid when people come in to make the application for the permit. It's, it's not a billable monthly or anything like that. So to do those kinds of things in terms of utility bills or monthly billing would, is not how this is set up to take, to be implemented. In regards to assistance for people, you know, I think we could spend the whole night talking about ways that people could be assisted. And I would like to pursue that. But I think for the sake of, you know, as Michael said, we did put a lot of time into this. All of the things we're discussing tonight had been discussed. And this was what we came up as our recommendation. So that being said, I guess I'd like to see us move forward, whatever motion that looks like, and take care of this. So as it was pointed out, we can get on to the rest of it. But, but I would like to say that the, all of these things were taken into account, people's budgets, people's finances, how this was going to be administered, those kinds of things. So, you know, I do believe that we can go down that road to look for some assistance with this. But I think for now, we need to look at the rule versus the exception.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Y?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Oh, okay. Councilman Villar?
I'd like to call the question on the amended motion.
Okay. We'll take a vote. The motion is to reduce the fee from one hundred and twenty-five to...
We need to vote on, call in the question.
Okay.
And that takes a two-thirds vote to pass, as I recall.
Okay. I was about to ask for a vote. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, please, Kristin. This is calling the question.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of reducing the fee from one twenty-five down to fifty signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Nay.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
No.
Okay, hang on, sorry, I'm off. Okay, Lalum, Manti?
No.
Okay, Roby?
Nay.
Villahauer?
No.
Y?
Nay.
So that motion fails.
Okay. So do we have more conversation about the rest of the fee schedule? Or the rate schedule?
That, Mayor. If I could just quickly interject, I've had it on my screen here for a while. Just for the public's knowledge, this section of ordinance that specifically talks about sump pump discharges that are being, that are prohibited. And that is in chapter seventeen oh six. So if anybody were to want to reference this, we do prohibit sump dump, sump pump discharges from being channeled to our sanitary sewer system. With exception for, in seventeen six oh three, we do grant variances. And that's, I just wanted to show this for the public's knowledge on where this is at in ordinance, so that adds some context to the discussion here.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion over the rest of the proposed rate schedule? Councilman Hollein?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, same question as I had with the solid waste disposal. Just want to make it clear that this three-dollar, ten-cent increase is just this year. Subsequent increases can be discussed in subsequent years, correct?
Correct. That is the plan.
And then with that, I just wanted to clarify something. I've had a couple people, I think, another misconception that was out there. A lot of people thought we were raising that fee by twenty-seven dollars. We're not. It's just three dollars and ten cents up to about the twenty-seven dollar range, which would still put us at, would it be the lowest in South Dakota? If not the lowest, it would be very, very low. So our rates would still be quite low, showing the good work that Mike and his crew are doing. So I would recommend passage on the rest of the motion.
Thank you. Yes, there we are, and there will be. Still in our same position even with an increase. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll look for action then. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item E is approval of resolution number twenty dash fifty-one, amending the engineering design standards, expanding on the rural street section criteria, and making other minor revisions. Motion by Hollein and a second by Villahauer. And I'll ask Heath to tell us about this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as the council's aware, we have adopted new engineering design standards. They went to effect in March of two thousand and twenty. Seems like it was longer ago than that, but it's already been since, it's just been since March. The, the adopted design standards allow for updates and modifications from time to time, as you can imagine. The document that we have that goes through how public infrastructure is designed in our community is pretty extensive. And as technology changes and as new ideas come to surface and we deal with consultants and developers and brainstorm for improvements and other things of that nature that drive how public infrastructure is built, we do want to be able to amend these from time to time. So this is the first amendment we're proposing. It's a fairly minor one, I would say. The current engineering design standards do have some guidance for rural street sections. Now, rural street section, of course, is something you would envision out in rural South Dakota. And it's essentially a street section with a surface and no curb and gutter. You instead have your, your ditches, your borrowed ditches that convey the surface runoff from the adjacent properties. Those ditches absorb and convey flows from the roadways and those adjacent properties. An urban street section, on the contrary, is what we typically would see in any developing community where you've got curb and gutter installed and storm sewer systems installed to convey the runoff. So that's one of the primary differences between the two. Our urban street sections require paving. Our rural street sections also require paving of either asphalt or concrete. And what we wanted to expand on in this amendment was to provide a typical section of what rural street section would look like. So in chapter eight of our design standards, we talk about street design and configurations. And we have, we have information in there for typical sections for urban streets, but not for rural. I apologize here as I scroll through this information. There's all the current information here is included in the packet. So it's a little bit lengthy until we get to the, some of the amendments. This, this chart right here is really what drives our street design criteria. And this row right here addresses rural street sections.
You got to share your screen.
Oh, sorry. There we go. So the minimum rural street section that's allowed in our design standards is as low as a twenty-two-foot wide in residential areas. You get up into a commercial industrial for local street classification. Those are twenty-four feet. And then you get up into the, I'm sorry, I'll zoom in a little bit more here. This row here essentially addresses the street widths. And of course, the higher the street classification, when you go from a local to a collector or arterial, the street width requirement gets all the wider as that traffic counts are generally higher at those classifications. There's some language in the notes here that existed previously, that rural minor collectors shall have four-foot paved shoulders and major collectors shall have eight-foot paved shoulders. We added some new notes, that rural sections do not allow parking except upon approval by the city engineer, in which case lanes shall be a minimum of eight feet wide. Parking lanes shall be a minimum of eight feet wide. And then rural sections may require additional drainage easements. That's due to the fact that we have a standard right-of-way width for our streets based on their classification. Those right-of-way widths are outlined right here. And on occasion, the sixty-six-foot right-of-way or on the larger streets, the eighty-foot right-of-way, may or may not accommodate the ditch section that's required to convey all the runoff. So you may end up having surface flows from rain events needing a larger ditch section that would not be able to be built within that sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Anyway, that's what the drainage easement language is discussing. The other point I wanted to make here is that as far as sidewalks, rural street sections should have a five-foot detached sidewalk or ten-foot detached pathway on one side with access points at least every five hundred feet. This is a point I wanted to point out because, of course, the council, this is just a recommendation from staff that we thought it'd be appropriate to have sidewalk on at least one side of a rural street section. If council deemed that we wanted it on both, we could definitely make that amendment in here. But the way it's drafted right now is that sidewalk would be required on at least one side of a rural street section. And if you can envision a rural street section, here, actually, I'll pull up the typical section for it. These are existing urban street sections. You have the pathway or sidewalk, you got a boulevard, you got the curb and gutter, you have the paving, and so on and so forth. And these are for different classifications, different street widths. And then we come down to our newly proposed rural street section. So as you can see, once you get to the edge of pavement, things look different on a rural street section. You drop into a drainage ditch or drainage swale. And here's where we've identified a five-foot sidewalk on one side. So it's, it's a little less than conventional to build a sidewalk next to or adjacent to a rural street section, but we thought that we'd start here as a talking point. And we would, of course, want to see that built up off the back slope of the ditch, not down here necessarily unless there were certain circumstances where we'd really want to. But I would want to avoid that at most all costs and see it built up out of the flow line of the ditch sections. But this is the general section that we came up with to allow rural, to help clarify how rural street sections should be designed in our community. So again, in a nutshell, the, the standards allowed for rural street sections, it just didn't give enough detail that we wanted to see to give developers guidance on what those should look like. And this is a first step in that process. The next step that I'll touch on briefly is that we do need to... is that we do need to identify where we're going to allow rural street sections. Uh the, according to our ordinances, right now, we don't specifically say in this zoning district, you can have a rural street section. Or a zoning district or a a type of development with this type of density, you can have a rural street section. Uh those are things that we do need to approach the council with, with another ordinance amendment and clarify uh where these would be allowed um from here forward.
Doesn't it say somewhere that rural streets are, I I thought I remember one acre lots, somewhere in here?
Yes, you are correct, Mayor. And the engineering design standards in the current draft um which I believe is a part of the attachment, let me pull that up. It's one of the last pages.
Section eight thirteen, I think, is what you're referring to, Heath.
Yes, you're you're right. Eight thirteen uh starts to talk more in detail about rural street standards in the Ashtoe uh criteria. Uh the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. Um they provide some guidance on design of rural sections that we would also refer to. And then also in eight fourteen, and this is the section the mayor's referring to. Um it talks about how subdivisions outside the city limits and the extraterritorial platting jurisdiction shall comply with these requirements. And then it goes on further to say other subdivisions within the city limits may use these standards if consistent with adjoining subdivisions and densities are less than one house per acre. So this is the only guiding language we have right now in our engineering design standards. There currently isn't any other language in the zoning ordinance or any other uh of the city ordinances that touch on where these would be allowed. So as it sits right now, it would take a uh a rural type of residential subdivision to be presented to the city in order to consider rural street sections. Uh what that typically looks like is at least uh one house per acre. And some communities will actually have a rural residential zoning district. It's uh for like s- micro acreages, if you will, that are in, within the city limits. Um they of course cause for a little bit more sprawling type of development because they are larger lots to account for, you know, not only the houses, but typically a horse barn or a shop or things of those uh type of amenities that people in those types of subdivisions would commonly have. Um our current ordinance doesn't offer up rural residential uh zoning district. Um so really, this is the only language that we have to go on at this point. And I can tell you, the reason this is is surfaced, we have uh two subdivisions right now that are currently proposing rural street sections. One of them is in the uh Commercial Lake District. And the other one is in a uh R R one or?
It's R one.
R one.
It's actually, is that ag right now? It might be zoned ag at the, at the moment.
Yeah, it might be.
It's CACs, um an extension of the CACs development.
So getting the uh, aside from these criteria that we're wanting to polish up the engineering design standards with, that would be the next step is to get some clarity on where the community feels it's appropriate to entertain having rural street sections. If it'll, I mean, if we're gonna have them engineering design standards, obviously, the intent is we would use them in some places, but where would those places be? And as of right now, it's just in locations with densities less than one house per acre. Uh the other few changes in here are really simple housekeeping changes. I can uh try to thumb through those or answer any questions on those as well, but it was fixing anomalies or discrepancies from the engineering design standards in comparison with our already implemented uh BMP manuals, the storm sewer manuals that we already have in place. Those were some of the corrections that we made. Um simple housekeeping errors that were corrected.
Uh I have another housekeeping error for you to, is this a first reading or is this a resolution?
Resolution.
Okay, so I'll tell you. Eight thirteen in the table of contents for chapter eight does not mesh with eight thirteen in the text. Inside the text, you're crossing off "and" urban and just calling it rural street standards. So that should be consistent with the um table of contents.
We'll make that correction, Mayor. Thank you.
Also, the page number needs to be eight twenty-seven for rural street standards and eight twenty-eight for rural subdivision road standards. I, I think that um, I'm glad you're bringing this up, and it's kind of a heavy topic, but the, the staff has to respond to a request for rural sections on two separate developments. Unrelated developers, they both want rural sections of road and we don't have a standard for it, so um the sidewalk thing is uh I think a key point. Right now, our ordinance reads sidewalks are required on both sides of every street, and there was one subdivision where the plan commission, or actually they, it was stated that they'd have it on one side, and then they argued about which side that's going to be. And then how do we decide that? And how do you get to it in a rural section where you have a ditch? And the road has a a section and then a ditch and then a sidewalk, how do you get between them and what's the purpose of that sidewalk? So um I think the, there isn't a thought that the sidewalk is getting you to and from the road because you're gonna have to wade through a ditch to get from the road to the sidewalk. But more, the sidewalk allows for pedestrians and we allow bicycles on sidewalks in this town. Um for pedestrians and bicycles to get from a subdivision to another part of our town without walking on the road. And um so I, I do think it's important to have the sidewalks. I'm, I'm not totally convinced that rural standards are appropriate in an urban setting, but I I'll defer that to the council. I do understand they're less expensive to own and to maintain. Um and I like that part of it. But it does, in an urban setting, present obstacles. So um these are for sprawl areas. And in general, we should be concentrating on dense um development in an urban setting. We're an urban area, and if we're allowing for rural development, it's going to be difficult to sustain just by nature of the sprawl itself, so it it kind of rubs me the wrong way that way.
Um the other subdivision, and we talked about CACs being the residential one, the other subdivision is a uh of commercial and residential mixed use uh by the lake. And um eh from a staff standpoint, I could see going either way on uh the allowance of a rural section there. We do have a lot of rural section streets around the lake, obviously, North Lake Drive, South Lake Drive, but we also have a lot of urban street sections out there as well with some of the more recent subdivisions that have built around the lake. Um in this particular case, uh the uh the developer's gone to uh a great extent of designing a rural section and and conveyance of their stormwater runoff through rural section. And it's kind of come to a head in our review process here in checking off those construction plans. Not quite having what we need to formally allow for that in that area, but seeing where it could be fitting in that area as well. So I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for guidance on that tonight, Mayor, or not, but.
I think so. I, I think that the council needs to weigh in on wh- what we should and shouldn't allow in our community. It's really the council's decision. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess just because I kind of grew up in this neighborhood, and I'm sure at one point it was rural or on the edge of being rural. But um just Tenth Avenue south of Mount Hope Cemetery, I mean, that's a rural road, right? That's what we'd call a rural road. It doesn't have curb and gutter, it just has two ditches around it, but that's quite in city limits these days.
Where?
In Tenth Avenue uh east of Highway eighty-one over to Eleventh Street.
Because there's no curb and gutter on that.
Tenth Avenue north.
North, yeah, sorry, I should have given that part, just Mount Hope, just south of it.
Yeah.
By the soccer fields that were there. Um and I'm sure at one point that was rural. I mean, it's not that far back for some people to remember when Lincoln was just out by nothing. Lincoln Elementary, that is. Um so I guess looking at that, I I guess eh I'm a little hesitant with pushing rural streets because eventually they're not gonna be rural. That, at least I would hope that eventually they're not gonna be so rural anymore, and so just looking down the road, if that's something we want to consider of just either we're gonna have to upgrade it at some point, or we're gonna have a rural road that's surrounded by urban things.
Well, and I, I think that y- you make a good point, but if you have very low density, one acre lots. And do we hold them to that in the future when they want to subdivide and make, you know, four lots out of every lot?
Correct, that's definitely the challenge here. I mean, we do have some that are kind of out there quite a ways, and your point too, that it's cheaper to maintain a rural road, I mean, that, believe me, that doesn't fall on deaf ears either. But I guess those are just things to weigh in on and think about.
Right. Councilman Billhauer?
I guess I'm a little confused as to what we are doing now tonight. I mean, I, initially when you gave your presentation, Heath, it sounded like some relatively minor revisions that uh we needed to act on as part of this resolution. Now I'm hearing a different conversation that this is a media subject, so what, so what are we acting on tonight? And I guess I got a follow-up question to that. This is typically something that, to me, would come through the planning commission uh to have them bet this before it comes to the council, and that, that hasn't been the case with this, so I, I guess I want some clarification or guidance as far as what we're doing tonight.
Yes, great, great point, Councilman Billhauer. The, the crux behind the action tonight is simply updating the engineering design standards. Um part B to that conversation is where should these rural street sections be allowed? And that is something that we had talked to the planning commission about. I actually gave them a heads-up discussion uh at the last planning commission meeting to let them know we'd be circling back to get their input on that as well. And thank you for that reminder. Um and and perhaps tonight, we treat this as just planning the seat of of thought to the council, and we, we do circle back to the planning commission and get their input on where they should be allowed. Uh the only downside to that and the more pressing issue is the reviews in front of us at hand today that I'll need to have some timely responses to in the near future. Um but that being said, we could uh, we could just press our schedule internally to get something to the planning commission as soon as absolutely possible. And then subsequently to the council and have something formalized that way. But tonight's action is simply updating engineering design standards, and then the subsequent discussion needs to be, where should we allow these rural street sections?
So we have um twenty-four foot um road with two four-foot shoulders, paved shoulders. That's what you're proposing? Are those shoulders paved?
The, let me pull up that chart here if I could.
It's one twenty-six of the packet.
So the current standards for residential are simply twenty-two foot paved width. Eh you can look at that in any configuration you want, you know, if it's two eleven-foot lanes, it's all, it's all paved. We don't necessarily specifically call out in this chart any shoulder width, except for the rural minor collectors shall have four-foot paved shoulders and major collectors shall have eight foot. So if you look at their widths up top here, um the minor collectors account for two four-foot paved shoulders by adding eight feet from the section beneath them. So you go from twenty-four to thirty-two because you've added the two four-foot paved shoulders. And then subsequently from there, you go from thirty-two to forty because you're adding the two eight-foot paved shoulders for a major collector. So the only two that they call out shoulders specifically are the minor collectors and major collectors.
So in CACs development, they could have twenty-two feet width, no shoulder?
Correct. At a bare minimum. The two eleven-foot driving lanes, there'd be no parking on those, either of those uh sides of street. And those dimensions, those existed in the currently adopted design standards.
Right. Councilman Lalum?
Thank you, Mayor. In the matter of time here, um if if we have two different projects, let's go with the one project first and let's put the other one on the agenda for another time. Um so, I mean, if that's what we're looking for, unless this is somewhere they're coming to us tomorrow, um let's, let's move on.
They've already put plans, I mean, the plans aren't before you to approve. The standard is, so we're we're, what we're doing is having the council set the standard instead of the development setting the standard, because once you've approved a development, you're kind of setting the standard.
But they're changing their development?
Uh th- they've, they've proposed something, but we don't have a standard. So if we just approve theirs, there you go. There's the standard. We're trying to make you consider what, what you what you would go with. Councilman Hoyer?
Heath, I'd say as long as you have those street sections with the five-foot detached sidewalk or the ten-foot detached pathway with one, on one side. I think that covers the biggest concerns on my end. Otherwise, the rest of it looks good and thought out.
And it does say uh one acre lots. Um if they get smaller than that, then they're moving into an urban section, so. Councilman Lalum?
I, I guess I would ask a question. First of all, Heath, I really appreciate the time that you have put into this going back to last uh winter, early spring, when we approved these engineering design standards. I guess I wanna, I, I don't understand necessarily what we're all looking at here. Uh I'm not an engineer, but uh I, I don't feel I can necessarily need to. But my question is, from a developer's perspective, are these revisions substantial? Uh because when, when we, when we passed with engineering design standards, eh to me, it was to have a, a playbook in place that a developer could rely upon that the ru- that they knew what the rules were, and now to me, we're changing the playbook again, so I guess I'm wondering, how drastic are we revising that? And now we're circumventing what we're trying to accomplish with the standards begin with.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I apologize for the lack of clarity here, but everything in black is what has been existing since March when we adopted these standards. So we did have standards as far as a minimum width for a rural section. Uh we added a few notes in red uh that kind of expand on these criteria so that um we address a few of the things that weren't in here. The biggest thing we're adding really is this typical section right here, which just takes that table and puts, puts it into a, a figure, that uh a diagram that's, it's maybe more user-friendly than the table. And it's identifying what uh um for, again, this is only spelling out a typical rural collector street, so you do see the four-foot shoulders. You do see the twelve-foot lanes. Um and the minimum um overall eighty-foot right-of-way is specified and all these things that are already spelled out up here in this table. So as far as the change of the standards, there's really none that we're implementing. We're just adding clarity to them.
Okay.
Uh with exception to, I think that rural street section is having that five-foot sidewalk. I do believe that is new. And I, I gotta give credit here to Justin too. Justin did the drafting of these, uh and I'll defer to him just to make sure that that five-foot sidewalk is a new requirement. Justin, is that correct?
Yeah, um uh five-foot sidewalk on one side, yes.
Great, thank you. So really, the overall effect is, is pretty minimal. I can tell you those two subdivisions that have submitted plans for rural street sections, they already meet these minimum requirements, so it wouldn't even be an issue for them.
Good, that's good. So there's, there's no are they, they're different though, right?
Uh the, the two proposed?
Yeah.
Correct. I believe one was uh thirty feet and the other one, I believe, was twenty-eight feet in width.
Do they have shoulders? So the twenty-eight would meet the somewhere in between a minor collector and a residential?
Yeah, correct.
So if, if they want parking on it, they need to make it four feet wider, otherwise we could probably just take six feet off of it. Which I'm sure they would have no problem doing. I hope everyone isn't confused. I think this is good. I'm glad we're doing this. I, we needed a drawing in there, a typical section. And we've addressed the sidewalk issue, so. There you have it. Any more questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Albertson?
Aye.
Uh, Hoyer?
Aye.
Holine?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahower?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash thirty-eight, an amendment to chapter twenty-one point oh-two, administration and enforcement of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. No action here. Um, Heath, would you please explain what this is?
Uh, yes, absolutely, Mayor. This is an update to the zoning ordinance in relation to uh the number of uh uh voting members that are required um in relation to board of adjustment uh actions. The previous language or the language that we're adding to it says, it's in the green text here. I'll share my screen again on the uh uh the agenda packet. The green text is, is a summary, summary of what's being added to this section of the ordinance. Notwithstanding the foregoing, conditional uses shall be determined by an affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the present and voting members of the board. So the board of adjustment, of course, acts on our conditional uses and variances uh under the uh the guidance of the zoning ordinance in chapter twenty-one. Uh, there's been discussion here recently on uh the number of votes uh that are required in order to pass uh conditional uses. And we decided to make this specific to being two-thirds of the present and voting members rather than two-thirds of the members of the board. Um, there were some lengthy discussions on that. What we're doing here is completely aligned with state statute. It, it leaves it up to this, the municipalities to determine what percentage of the board needs to act in order for the passing of a conditional use. And you could set that as two-thirds of the board or two-thirds of the present voting members. What we've opted to do is reduce that down to the present voting members. What it effectively does is takes our uh five positive votes and reduces it to four if we don't have a full member board presence. Um, the quorum for the BOA is um two-thirds of that board. So you need at least five boards member, five board members present in order to carry out business in the BOA. And prior to this amendment, you would need all five of those to vote yes in order to pass a conditional use with the amendment that reduces the vote down to four. Um, this has been reviewed by the planning commission and recommended for approval uh on a vote of six to one at the October twenty-second meeting. And if I butchered that like I did in my mind here, Brandy or Matt, please chime in because it's been a group effort to put this one together and a lot of conversations with the planning commission on it.
I'm printing something.
Okay, I, I have a question about why this is in the variance section and not the conditional use section. Is that because they, we don't talk about the quorum? In the, in the conditional use section?
Uh, Brandy or Brandy, could you chime in on that question?
Yes, um, that is correct, Mayor. So it only touches on it, on the voting in that section. Um, let me look here really quick.
Why wouldn't we put this in the conditional use section? Like in section two two, what is this, two B seven? Or eight or nine? I mean, if you're looking through what...
You'll see, well, and I didn't pull it up. I'm, I'm just looking at my ordinance book, um, my hard copy, but so B is conditional uses and then C is variances. And then it goes in through one through nine, but then it gets back out to D, E, and F for um for the, for those sections.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's a, all powers and duties. Okay, never mind. That's where it belongs. Thank you. Um,
Yep.
Let me see, get back to my team's screen here. Uh, Councilman Lalum?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Uh, Heath, on the one that voted against it, what was the reasoning?
There was some discussion at the planning commission in relation to um actually, Matt, Matt's been involved in those discussions a lot more in depth than I have. If I could let him paraphrase that, he could probably do it a better way than I could if, if you could, Matt.
Sure.
Yeah, I can, I can try. Uh, so essentially, um, there was a member, hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
What, what's that?
You're good. There, there's some feedback from someone else, but I don't know who it is.
Oh, okay. There was uh, oh, if I recall correctly, the, there was a proposal to um, instead of making it two-thirds, uh, to essentially uh reduce the number. The concern was that uh as it is right now, if the full board is there, uh, there's still a five-vote requirement. So the, the, one of the members was concerned that they, they felt that five votes was too much of a hurdle uh to um, to ask somebody to, to uh get over for a conditional use. So they felt that a conditional use was um, you know, is something that's uh, should be less uh difficult to obtain than a variance. And, and so they proposed some language uh that would have allowed a, a four-vote passage if a full board was there. And uh they made a motion to that effect. That motion did not get a second and then they voted against the main motion.
Thanks.
Try to add to the confusion.
Any other questions?
Mayor, just a comment. If you want to get down the weeds on this, I would encourage our colleagues up here in the council to, to follow the, I think it was October twenty-second, planning commission discussion because it, it was very lengthy and uh very detailed. So uh, but it might be worth us spending the time to, to review that prior to us acting on it.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you. All right, we'll move on with, if no one else has any comments or questions. Item G is also a first reading of ordinance number twenty dash forty-two, an amendment to the zoning designation of PUD planned unit development for Williston addition. So Heath, want to explain that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Williston addition currently has an active uh PUD zoning district in plan, in place. Uh, their plan includes uh covenants for uh this area. And what they're proposing here through this amendment um is to amend their plan to allow for uh more of a mixed use within the PUD. The original presentation of the PUD included uh personal storage units only. And these are the sizable personal storage units uh for boats and RVs, uh campers and jet skis and snowmobiles and what have you. And what they've shifted to in this amendment is to allow for uh residential living quarters in a certain number of their units. These units are going to be uh condominiumized and, and under a, an association managed within uh the association requirements. And that is one of the amendments um that they have copied here. Sorry, I'm stammering as I pull up this map, but one of the amendments that they're proposing is they would update their covenants for their association to restrict uh residential living quarters in a certain, I believe, three of these units here. And the rest of this would still remain private storage, again, at a larger scale. Uh, these do have residential siding. Uh, they meet uh all the residential type requirements as far as, as that is concerned. We've looked at it from a code standpoint, from a life safety standpoint with Chip Premus, fire marshal, as well as uh Stacy, the community development manager, and, and also with Brandy, the urban planner. And the way we view this is that these units that they're proposing to have residential quarters in would be something uh of the likes of a townhouse, a row of townhouses with really large garages. They do not exceed the attached garage limits that we do have in ordinance, so there aren't any issues in that respect. Um, and so from a staffing standpoint, this seems to meet everything. And then from a code standpoint, they'd be required to put in uh fire suppression systems and have these units sprinkled. They'd have minimum firewall ratings and things like that between the living quarters and the storage areas. So that is the proposed amendment out here uh in this Williston subdivision. This is out of the southwest corner of Lake Pesca, by the way. Um, I don't know if we had a map attached here or not, but uh Brandy is on the line here with us and we can help answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hoyer.
Um, I guess just for clarity, I mean, it meets requirements, meets requirements. Um, so the idea is to have the housing on the side of it. They're not gonna like loft it above the garage or anything like that. It's gonna be a separate unit to the side and then like a detached garage or are they attaching it? Just out of curiosity, I guess.
Yeah, Brandy, could you speak to the specifics uh or Stacy as far as what you've seen for renditions for the building plans on the interior?
And Stacy, actually, it might be better to speak to this, but so when you look at the map that Heath has pulled up, unit fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen of lot two of that south, southern building there, um, those will have, the garage will obviously be facing towards the north and then the living quarters will be in the southern part. And I believe that they will have separate entrances to the south as well, just as a secondary exit. Um, but Stacy might be able to confirm that. Um, she has received one set of plans for one of the tenants to do their interior remodel if this rezone or amendment to the PUD is approved.
Stacy, are you online with us yet?
Good evening, this is Stacy. Can you hear me?
Yep, there you are. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I do have um a basic drawing here of their floor plan and it does look as though um there will be a garage just like there would be on a regular residential home that is separated from the living space in question. Um, and then I forgot the other question. I apologize.
I guess essentially, is it a detached home or are they kind of looking to make it into a unit where like the housing is lofted above the garage? Because I know I've seen that before too. I'm just trying to get a picture of this a little bit since it's a little unconventional.
I believe it's a combination of living quarters on the main and lofted. Is that correct, Stacy?
I believe so, yes.
All right, are there other questions?
But I don't think the living quarters are going to be lofted on top of where the garage space will be. There will just be, in the southern part of the, of the unit, there will be two stories. So there will be the main floor and then the loft and then the garage will just have um a higher space because the garage doors are actually fourteen feet. So just so they have area to park larger vehicles and RVs and whatnot.
Right.
That's what I'm showing on the plans.
Do you have that electronically, Stacy, where you can share your screen?
I don't have it electronically. I just have a concept right now.
Okay.
A concept drawing.
Okay.
I apologize.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, any other questions about that one? See, none. We'll move on. Um, item H is authorization for the fire department to purchase ten digital radios in the amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars sixty cents using COVID relief fund dollars previously awarded to the city of Watertown. Motion by Holine? Second by Villahower and uh is Doug on or Don Roland? Who's on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm on.
Okay. Don, you want to tell us about this?
Sure, thanks, Mayor, and members of council. I'm here tonight to ask for authorization to purchase ten digital radios that cost forty-five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. We're gonna be using these funds, the COVID relief funds that were previously awarded to the city of Watertown back in early spring here. After visiting with Kristen Bobb and her finance director, we decided we reached out to our local government COVID recovery coordinator. And uh basically with that, we put together a detailed project as to how we're gonna use these, utilize these funds. And basically he approved those funds right away. And essentially what we'd be doing, we'd be replacing ten XPS Motorola digital radios back in the early two thousand. And they're pretty much outdated and not serviceable anymore. And uh basically, this is part of our long-term twenty-one through twenty-six long-term capital allocation we previously approved. And they do come with no uh match to the city of Watertown. And again, just to make sure that reimbursement process. Well, then I take any questions?
Uh, you were really hard to understand. Kristen, are, are you able to summarize what he said?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can help. So when we were originally awarded the little bit over five million dollars, um, with that came the, the public safety aspect. But then anytime that there was any equipment that would qualify, our job was to ask if it was uh something that was eligible. So Doug and Don at the fire department did reach out to the state of South Dakota and the state of South Dakota did verify that these radios would be eligible as a reimbursable. Um, so essentially, if the council approves this, what they will be doing is they will be allowing the fire department to go ahead and purchase something that was not in the budget, um, but purchase it ahead of the schedule to relate to the COVID nineteen. So that's essentially what um this motion would do.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any questions? No questions. All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay, Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Holine?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahower?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are down to old business. Is there any old business? See, none. Is there any new business? Zipping right along here. How about any liaison reports? Any announcements? Councilman Hoyer?
Tomorrow's election day.
No, thank you, for those who may have forgotten. Um, Councilman Villar?
Uh, Wednesday, airport terminal groundbreaking?
Yes, yes.
Two o'clock?
Two o'clock at the airport terminal. We're gonna be doing a groundbreaking. The public is welcome to come and we invite you.
I will add, uh, do not be shocked. The ground has already been broken, but we will still hold the ceremony.
Quiet, Heath. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, we do have to go into executive session. Oh, Matt?
Uh, we uh failed to have that uh COVID resolution on the agenda again, again, and now Councilman Al wanted to discuss the issue.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, is there anyone that is interested in discussing our emergency resolution? Or any, proposing changes to it? See, none? We do have a reason to go into executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on some confidential financial information for economic development purposes. And we do not expect to take action upon coming out. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one dash twenty-five dash two. So we have a motion by Villahauer and a second by Holine. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Albertson?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Holine?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are in executive session.